Get started. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Regular Meeting this February 1st, 2022, the day before Groundhog's Day for those who are observant. And let's hope that Punxsutawney Phil does not see his shadow, so we have just two more weeks of winter up north. Anyway, welcome to the City Commission Meeting, and for those of you who are here for the first time, I'd like to invite you to stay for the whole meeting, but certainly at the beginning, where I will first ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. So the City of Fort Lauderdale is hosting Commission Meetings in person. For any additional information on how to view the meeting, please visit the following website, Got to figure a way to shorten that. Now, to help ensure decorum, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines, Commissioner Glassman. Number one, please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, distracted, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. Or two, if you wish to speak on a specific agenda item, please sign up in the City Hall Lobby. A member of the city's clerk's office staff will be there to assist you. So with regard to our meetings, there's a certain format. I'm first going to ask that we call the roll.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Here.
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie? He's not present at the moment. Commissioner Sorenson?
Here.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, here. Now, I'd ask the Commission to take a moment, and after you've had some time to review the minutes and the agenda, I'd like someone to please move to accept the minutes and the agenda.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie, present. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the minutes for the December 7th meeting and tonight's agenda have now been approved. So, at this point, we come to what's called the Consent Agenda. What that means is that these are items in which the City Commission votes on all at once, and however, if there's an item in particular that a member of this Commission wants to have polled and talked about and discussed separately, that member of the Commission has that opportunity to do so. If there's an item here which you wish to speak on one of those Consent Agenda items, it will be at that time that you will be allowed to speak. However, if a Commissioner does not pull the item that you're here to speak on, you'll be allowed to speak before we vote on everything on that particular agenda item, and you'll be given three minutes in which to speak. So far, I don't have anybody who's asked to speak on any of the Consent Agenda items, so I will ask the Vice Mayor, do you have any items in which you would like to pull?
No, thank you.
Nope. Commissioner Glassman?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I do, I do have one item, but I did want to just mention something that you talked about a little bit earlier. This is very bad news, but just so you know, Milltown Mel, the groundhog that looks tomorrow, he actually died today. I'm rea-- yes, I, yeah.
Did you have a moment of silence?
Yes. New Jersey's weather predicting groundhog, Milltown Mel, has died suddenly just before his big day. Full story at Facebook slash Milltown Mel.
But wait, isn't Punxsutawney Phil the one who normally predicts the weather? And that's in Punxsutawney, Pennsylvania.
Well, this is New Jersey's Milltown Mel. So, you know, maybe every state has their own groundhog, but this is a, it's true story.
I didn't know they were observant in New Jersey.
Well, I guess all the northern states are very concerned about Groundhog Day, but...
I would be too after that snowstorm they all had last week.
Yeah, so let's just think about Milltown Mel in New Jersey. Anyway.
Okay, well, I feel bad for him.
Yeah, sad.
I hope he led a full life.
I hope so, too. I don't know. What's the life expectancy of a groundhog?
I don't know.
I neither. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
From the shadows, I know that.
I'm gonna pull CP2.
CP2?
Thank you, sir.
CP2, okay? And Commissioner Sorenson?
None, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so except for CP2, and since I have no one who is asked to speak, is there anyone here that wants to speak on any of the Consent Agenda items other than CP2? Okay, there being none, so do I hear a motion to, a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items except for CP2?
Moved?
It's moved, do I hear a second? Moved and seconded, okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie, present.
I think he didn't show up because he didn't want to be first in voting tonight.
Right, he didn't like that.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and all those Consent Agenda items have now been approved except CP2. So if you're here on any of them, your item has been approved. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Please don't stampede out of the Commission chambers all at once, but thank you all for being here, and we appreciate your company. Okay, CP2, Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I did want to discuss this, and that's why I pulled it. I am opposed to this motion for a variety of reasons. Just to refresh everyone's memory, this is purchase of financial analysis services for BIMR from Ernst &amp; Young for $89,999. I know that we've had a discussion, and I think it is really very important to vet every aspect of this project because of its significance. But I also thought that when we had an earlier discussion about doing such services, that we all talked about having a master agreement with Ernst &amp; Young, and that perhaps this would just need a little bit of a, you know, an amendment to their contract so that we could tweak it a little bit and have them do this kind of work. But I never thought to the tune of $90,000. I just, for the life of me, cannot understand it. In December, we all received a document that's called "The Comprehensive Economic Development and Fiscal Impacts of the BIMR Mixed-Use Development to the City of Fort Lauderdale and Broward County Economies." And if you look at the folks that actually wrote this study, it's quite a...
Well, did you see the scope of work that the city staff outlined for this particular item?
Yes.
The scope of work is quite extensive.
Yes, but if you look at the scope of work that was already done on the Comprehensive Economic Development and Fiscal Impact Study that we received in December, that work is actually quite extensive.
But who, who's the one that initiated and paid for that?
Well, exactly, but, okay, so yes, you're correct. The tenant actually initiated and paid for this. But that doesn't mean that we don't have real estate experts that we use, meaning Colliers, that could certainly look at the document that we've already had done for us and tell us whether the assumptions make any sense. And then we also have an auditor, and we have a department that could tell me if the math and the economic modeling makes sense. In other words, I don't know why we have to reinvent the wheel on this study and on the economic development and fiscal impacts of this project. Because if you do look at this document, it is, it is very extensive. And I understand what you're saying about who paid for it, and I mean, I'm always...
I just don't think it may be as objective as an independent auditor might provide. I'm not trying to cast aspersions on the author of that study, but let's face it, I think the city needs to have an objective analysis of this. Mr. Herbst, what do you think about that?
So to agree, there's no aspersion against the economic analysis that was performed on behalf of BIMR by their consultant. What we were attempting to do here is a couple of different things. One, we'll take a look at that, just to see if there's any thing in that report that they take any exception to, because there's always disagreements among professionals. The other item would be to come up with an independent estimate of what a reasonable return on that parcel might be, which is something the Commission has asked for repeatedly, and some understanding as to the viability of the financial estimates that are included in there. So we could continue on the path we're on of doing some of these things in-house, or we can rely on external experts that have a greater reach in terms of understanding the marketplace for these kinds of activities than, than we have. So we have reached out to Colliers, Commissioner, to answer that, and as you may recall, they came back with their estimates of what that property would be worth. But as I pointed out at the time I was asked about this previously, there are multiple ways of trying to assess the value based on the use. So for example, if you use it as a park, it has a very low value. If you build it out to its utmost capacity, it has a much higher value, so...
But that was for the appraisal part of it. I'm not really talking about the appraisal now.
But I think, but I think you can only evaluate the proffered rent in relationship to the value of the parcel. So those two things are intertwined. And I can't sit here and tell you what I think a reasonable rent is for that parcel, or what the increase in the value of the rights that the applicant or the tenant is currently asking for would be worth in the marketplace. That's not my area of expertise. So when the suggestion is that the auditor's office look at that, I can tell you quite frankly, I can't help you assess the value of that. I can absolutely check the math and make sure that the spreadsheet numbers are accurate, but I can't give you any opinion on the assumptions that go into those numbers.
Right, and I understand, and that's why I would say that that would be Colliers' portion, and your, your portion would be the other portion. Correct me if I'm wrong, the last time when this project went through DRC and then also for the, in front of the previous commission, didn't you do exactly that work? I mean, weren't you the one who was responsible for doing that, that modeling and the math?
I did some of it, and again, happy, happy to do so when it comes to evaluating the calculations that go into the net present value formulas and everything else. And I've done that with respect to the current spreadsheets as well. I've looked at those spreadsheets, and I can attest to the accuracy of the spreadsheets. What I can't tell you, though, is whether or not that is sufficient as a revenue number for what we're being asked to provide to them, because the...
Well, who did that the last commission? When you did the portions that you just mentioned that you felt you could do, who did the rest? The last time this went through DRC process and then also for the lease?
Last time it went through, so last time it went through DRC, they came and they applied for what they were entitled to as a matter of right. So there wasn't the same analysis. We had done an earlier iteration of a deal where we were trying to negotiate with the, the prior owner Blackstone, and we had worked through those calculations and had come up with a different methodology for assessing what the rent was going to be. Blackstone eventually walked away from that deal. Tate bought out the leasehold interest, came back with a proposal, which the Commission rejected, and then they came back with another proposal, which is what they had the right to do, as I understood it, under their existing lease agreement, which is what they were approved for. So there was no change to the lease at that point, so therefore, what you're talking about in terms of doing a financial evaluation didn't take place. They weren't asking for, when they came back to DRC at that point, they were not asking for a change in the use, or a change in the lease term, or anything else. So there was no additional rent being offered to us. There was no evaluation that needed to be done because they weren't asking for anything.
Well, even if they were not asking for anything, although that's not exactly my recollection on that project, because it did go through so many different iterations, I, I still don't understand why someone like Colliers, who we already have doing lots of work for us, and to me, actually would know the market better in terms of what the, you know, what's happening in the real estate market locally as opposed to Ernst &amp; Young, which, I don't know, where are they located? Like, not in Florida, right?
Ernst &amp; Young is worldwide.
But I mean, the office that would be, the office that would be dealing with this?
They have a local office.
Are they local, the people that would actually be doing this and have the same knowledge of the market as Colliers?
So again, they're not doing a real estate evaluation. That's, that's not what they're being retained to do. They're doing financial analysis. So we use real estate experts to evaluate the real estate aspect, and we use our financial experts to evaluate the financial aspects of the deal. So they're two entirely different things.
But aren't they doing the financial analysis based on the real estate that we're talking about?
They're doing the financial analysis based on the reasonableness of the projections of the assumptions that are being presented to us. That's not what Colliers is doing.
Right, so why couldn't, why couldn't Colliers, between Colliers and you, why couldn't this document, which is very extensive, be reviewed with you taking your expertise portion and Colliers taking their expertise portion? We probably would get it done a lot quicker. And again, I'm a little gun shy now, because, Mayor, we're waiting on Ernst &amp; Young for months and months and months and months on One Stop Shop, which is three and a half acres, quite a small project in comparison to this. I think if I'm going to start to go down the road with Ernst &amp; Young on this project, we're looking at another year.
No, what is the, don't we have a timetable on this, Mr. Herbst?
So the ti-- so timetable for BIMR? No, we don't have a timetable for BIMR. We had a timetable for, for One Stop, and I'll, I'll have to correct you there, Commissioner. We have not been months and months and months and months with Ernst &amp; Young on One Stop. So it was...
What have we been?
I don't have the agreement in front of me, but I want to say that it's probably been about six weeks since we have a signed scope of work and agreement in place.
How long did it take to get that signed scope agreement?
It took probably about four weeks to get that back and forth.
I think we're looking at different calendars. I think we're looking at different calendars.
We didn't, we didn't begin that process on One Stop, and, and I'll, I'll look back at Susan Grant, our finance director, but I want to say that was the beginning of December.
And that's after, and that's after this Commission had been talking about that project for how many months? And then at the, and then at the 11th hour, we get told, well, we should have Ernst &amp; Young look at it. That, to me, is also ridiculous. Why wasn't that, why wasn't that brought to us at the very beginning of the unsolicited proposal, saying we need to have Ernst &amp; Young look at this? And eight months ago, they could have started looking at this.
Because it was, I'll, I'll watch my words. It was very difficult getting the information from the applicant.
I, I don't agree with that.
We waited a long time and made multiple, multiple requests, and it was not until recently...
Anyway, I don't want to talk about One Stop right now. I want to talk about this. We really shouldn't be talking about One Stop.
That's what he's talking about. He's talking about BIMR.
I'm, I'm good with One Stop. I just think that, I don't understand why all of a sudden we seem to just be feeding everything we do to Ernst &amp; Young for anything related with an audit, anything related with financial analysis, anything related with real estate. If they're becoming our in-house consultant on everything, then let me know, but I just think it's, it's very time consuming. It's very expensive. How many hundreds of thousands of dollars already through, to Ernst &amp; Young on all of the projects? I, I, I just don't understand the necessity for that. Again, has anyone, has anybody read this document? And I know, Mayor, you said it came from the tenant, but has anyone looked at this document? It's very extensive. John, what do you think of this document?
I agree with you. I think it's a very extensive analysis of the economic impact to the community. That is not the same as doing a financial analysis of the project or the ability of the applicant to undertake the project. It is what's telling you all the good things that, that the city is going to receive as a result of moving forward with that project, does absolutely nothing to evaluate the financial ability or the, the value of, of that deal in terms of cash flow to, to the city. It's not intended to do that. It's intended to be an economic analysis of the totality of the project. So it's talking about employment, it's talking about sales taxes generated, and all these other things which are part of your consideration process, absolutely.
But it also, it also talks about income streams and revenues, because I saw the breakdown for the hotel and for the marina, which actually now look very conservative in terms of what we're seeing in terms of numbers today. So they actually do mention that. Let me ask you, why did you not recommend we do something like this? What you're saying now, we need to do. Why is this not being recommended? Why was it not recommended for Lockhart project?
It should have been done, so let's separate.
Why was it not?
Let's separate.
Why was it not done for War Memorial Auditorium?
Wait, timeout, Commissioner. We have two different, we have two different things that we're working here. So when you talk Lockhart, when you talk War Memorial, when you talk One Stop, or any of these other ones, those are unsolicited proposals that came in. This is not an unsolicited proposal. This is a completely different transaction that's going down a different path. You don't need an external financial analysis on this. If the Commission is happy and comfortable with what they have, you can move forward with this without a financial analysis.
No, I'm not saying that. I don't, I would like to have an analysis, but I believe that between your expertise and your staff's expertise and the expertise of Colliers, who we already have, we could get this done. Chris, what do you think? Chris, what do you think?
Well, I think that in very good faith, our staff and John worked towards doing what the commission was asking to do, and that's to investigate and just confirm that the financial part of this project makes sense. I do want to address the fact that Ernst &amp; Young was brought forward as a company that can do that. There's a handful, two handfuls, three handfuls of companies that are qualified to do this work. It was one that we went with, that we thought we had already negotiated contract with, so we thought that that actually sped the process up, not slowed it down. I'm very comfortable with using PFM, very comfortable with using a Deloitte or a KPMG. I could go right along and on and on if you want this type of a financial analysis. I do also know that Colliers, I've talked to them as well, and they have the ability to evaluate it more from the real estate side than from the financial analysis side. And, you know, when I talked to Ken, he said, you know, they thumb through the document that you have referenced a couple times and thought that they could do a fairly quick analysis of it and return something. I haven't seen a scope of work, so I can't go and read you 10 different bullet points and say in six weeks, we're going to have these things. But I think all those options are out there. It's whatever the commission's comfortable with. I mean, Reed's is a very good, good report. But to the, as I've heard, you know, to the mayor's point, it's, good reports sometimes just need to be validated because they sometimes come one-sided.
Right. No, I understand that, 100%. And I agree it's important to validate it. I mean, do you think that we could handle this between Colliers taking a look at what they need to do, what their expertise is, and then our auditor and his staff taking care of the math and the assumptions?
Well, I'd have to defer to John there as to what his...
Actually, not the assumptions. I would think that would be Colliers. They would be economic modeling.
Yeah, Colliers would look at it from a real estate modeling perspective.
Right. And then, and then we, I don't understand why we can't look at it in-house in terms of the math and the economic modeling. I have no idea why we can't do that.
I think to John's point, we have staff, and so does he, that can confirm the math. I just don't know that our skill level goes beyond that. I think I've captured that correctly, John. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, Commissioner Glassman, one question I have is, whatever model we use, can our timelines sync up with when we get the appraisal back? Because I believe, no.
No, I can answer that, when the appraisal's due back the week of February 14th, so...
That's two weeks.
That's two weeks. So, I don't see that either of the models we would move forward are going to sync with the appraisal coming back.
So, when, so when, how long do you think, how long, John, do you think, if we agreed on this tonight, how long do you think Ernst &amp; Young would take in order to accomplish the task that we've set out for them?
I can speak to that, Mayor. I have no idea.
It'll take forever.
Well, Mayor, just, hello, sorry. The agreement does say six weeks. I understand that that says six weeks, doesn't mean it's going to be six weeks, but the agreement we have with them limits into six weeks. But...
So, it says six weeks. So, it'd be a month after we got the appraisal back. They would certainly need the appraisal to play off of two, would they not?
I would think so, if you want a more robust analysis.
Right. So, I mean, this is a, this is a monumental, you know, decision we have to make, and to wait a couple more weeks after we've waited several years, you know, I think that it behooves us to do the right thing, and this community demands, you know, answers, and not just the ones that were propounded to us by the tenant themselves. I mean, I think we, to remove all taint from this process, we definitely need to do something more objective, at least as...
I'm not disagreeing with you. I just think there's another way to go about it in terms of being objective, because I know what's going to happen with Ernst &amp; Young. There'll be a, because I've seen it happen with One Stop Shop. There'll be a preliminary set of questions, and then those will get answered, and then there'll be another round of questions, and then those will get answered, and it'll just keep going. And I, six weeks? This won't happen in six weeks.
Well, if Colliers is working on it, would they be able to, also while they're working on the appraisal, possibly start some of this at the same...
Well, Colliers doesn't do that, though. They just do, they just do real estate...
Appraisals?
No, they, they would be able to work on the assumptions. They'd be able to look at this document and tell you whether these assumptions are correct or not.
They're real estate agents. They're not financial analysis.
No, but I, no, but I believe that a lot of this is also with regards to real estate. No, exactly. I know what you're saying. But I believe they would do that, and then it would be up to our own department, our own department to do the, to check and see if the math and the economic modeling makes sense. You know, I'm fine. I'm just telling you that I, I just think that it's unnecessary to spend the $90,000 on this. I think it's an outrageously high amount, considering that we already have a document, and they don't have to reinvent the wheel. But, you know, if you guys think it's...
I think it's money, I personally think it's money well-spent, and I have a lot of eyes looking on this, on this decision that we're going to make. And I think anything we can do to stay above board and make sure we have all of our facts is going to, it behooves us to secure that in the best way possible.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just disagreeing with you in terms of how we get there.
All right.
Well, I thought we were just given the information that Colliers and the, and John could work on this together and get us the same results. Aren't we just told that, that Colliers could work on the assumptions, and then John could double-check the math? Or that's not...
We have to defer to, if that's the level of, I mean, I, I think we can confirm math. And I think Colliers absolutely can handle the, handle what they're good at, which is the real estate component.
If Colliers can handle the real estate, why do we go out for another's...
Because that's what we asked for.
Right.
We can't sit here and second-guess what we have done.
Exactly.
But hold on a second.
You're right, though.
But, again, there's two documents, if I'm correct, that gives us assumptions that we've seen. You and I probably seen more. If, in fact, Colliers, our auditor, and this other document can be used to assume a number, what is wrong with that? I think we're with Ernst &amp; Young because we asked for it, not because that was the deciding factor. We asked for it. So, there's another way to get there. We did it with the previous commission in getting there, and we used some things for an assumption. Am I correct, or am I going down the wrong, hold on, let him, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And we kind of used that as a, as a guideline, just to make, to make a decision. And after we make decisions, everything has to check out down the road before we say, this is, this is a go. But if we keep, you know, kicking the can with these companies, especially Ernst &amp; Young, if it's going to take this much time. I agree with Commissioner Glassman that there's another way to get there. I think we all are saying the same thing, but how do, how can we get there faster since the real, hang in my opinion, was the appraisal from this group? Again, I have more experience dealing with this than most of the other than the mayor. And I don't need a whole lot more to change my mind or to, or to make the decision to move forward or not move forward. But I agree with Commissioner Glassman in terms of if these scenarios could work, John, I wouldn't want to waste $90,000, and we can get there with a different route.
So, how are you saying that, how are you recommending that the financial analysis be done, then?
You talking to me?
Yeah. You said you don't want to spend, you don't want to spend $90,000 to have the financial analysis?
Commissioner Glassman just gave us an example of how we can get there, and John agreed that it could work, along with Colliers and some other things like he's done in the past, and said, "This checks out." Now, I stand behind, "This checks out, and it meets that threshold." Am I correct? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but just...
Have we ever had Ernst &amp; Young look at Bahia Mar, ever, in the history of all of the Bahia Mar iterations?
Not in my eight years.
Well, let's, let's listen to what Mr. Herbst said. When the last time, the time in which this, the city commission voted on the site plan for Bahia Mar, they were not asking for anything that required a commission approval. It was a matter of right, because they were building 12 stories. They had the number of units. They were, they had the number of trips. So, there was no financial analysis necessary when the last commission voted to move forward with that project.
What about before that?
There was no vote before that.
Well, there was, I think it all collapsed with the lease, but wasn't there, there was a Blackstone-approved site plan before that?
I wasn't around. That was years and years ago.
It wasn't that many, no.
Right. And guess what? This commission, other than you and I, weren't around when we did it.
Right. I'm just saying, there's never been that...
What's your, what's your goal here? You just want to...
My goal is to get the...
You want to use the tenant's own analysis to tell the public?
No, you're...
That's not what he said.
No, you, you continue not to listen to what I'm saying.
Oh, I'm listening.
No, you're not, because I've told you four times now that I agree with your goal in making sure this is vetted properly. I'm just disagreeing with you on how we get there. I want to make sure this is vetted properly, but I don't believe that we, every time we have to turn around and hire Ernst &amp; Young for 100 here, 200 there, and then wait month after month after month, when I believe that this kind of work can be handled between who we have already with Colliers, and we pay. I don't know if we've received a scope from them, or what you think they would charge us. I don't think it would be $90,000. I just think that for what they have to do, considering they already have a very thorough, and I know what you're saying, it's done by the tenant, and that's okay, because it can still be, it can still be vetted by our staff in terms of the math and the economic modeling. And then Colliers can take a look at the assumptions, the real estate assumptions, and the other assumptions in the document. And I'm saying that I have more confidence in what we can do in-house and also with Colliers, without having to run to Ernst &amp; Young every single time we have a math question. That's all.
Okay. Well, what makes you think that our staff can do it any more quickly than Ernst &amp; Young can?
We've seen them.
Yeah, exactly.
What? We've seen them in action these years.
But they've not been asked to do an analysis like as complicated as this before.
They have checked documents that have been presented in the past and said that this is okay.
What does that mean?
I thought the city auditor just said he can't do it.
Like, if you look at, if you look at the document you're referring to, Steve, who, 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 who proposed that? Who put that together?
The Tates.
Hold on a second.
Well, no, well, they didn't write it.
No, who, what company? Can I finish talking?
Yeah, they did pay for it, obviously. And by the way, when I asked the question, I was told that this document, which is a very intense document with a detail...
Who produced that?
This cost, this cost less than $40,000.
Who produced it?
So, why is Ernst &amp; Young charging us $90,000?
You get what you pay for.
When this cost $40,000? Here, the principles, if you're asking me what the principles are, the principles are all, I mean, there's at least three of them. They're all noted economic analysis. They're also economic development people from a variety of institutions, and they all have 30, 35 years, business, economy, university educator, policymaker for federal and state government. I mean, these are not, if you read these people's resumes, these are not, they're not slackers. I mean, I don't think they made this up just because they were being paid by the Tates.
So, those numbers in there, along with our staff and Colliers, could be double-checked for accuracy.
I would cer, I would certainly hope so, and I don't think it would take us six months.
And 100 grand.
Well, you're, you're making that number up six months. That's never, ever been in this city to wait six months for anything.
We've already had seven weeks.
And, and by the way, there have been financial analyses done before on this site. I was just sent a note that the previous city manager hired Fishkind Group, CPAs, to do a financial analysis on a previous iteration of this.
How much did that cost?
I don't know. I don't have...
And where is it?
Or maybe your source can tell you.
It wasn't the same, it wasn't the same proposal, so it wouldn't have any relevance. Because this is a completely different proposal. This, the previous one was 653 units. Now, we're down to approximately 350 plus the hotel rooms. So, I mean, this is a completely different analysis.
It doesn't mean that the work is different.
It means that the, that the numbers from which you work are different, and the, and the income is different, and the, and the expectations are going to be different. It's a completely different...
But that's okay. That's why you have certain people vetting the, the economic model, and you have certain people vetting the assumptions and the math. It's really not that complicated.
And I hate to jump, I really don't want to jump into this conversation.
But you keep doing it.
But I want to have to, I just want to caution, though, that we're, with regards to just giving it over to Colliers to take a look at, they have a limited scope under our contract with them. So, they do real estate, and that's what they do. So, to the extent that there's any analysis and the assumptions dealing with their, their financial wherewithal, with the financing, with, you know, the, the commercial aspects of it, the marina, all that, that would probably be beyond their scope. So, we'd have to negotiate something else with them in order for them to be able to work.
I understand. Chris, have you had any discussions with them about the possibility of doing this work?
I think they would be open to a discussion, but I haven't had any, I haven't had any very specific discussions. I can tell you that we could have those discussions. The price will likely be under $100,000 in my signing authority. Technically, this is. I could move this forward without bringing it to the commission.
But that's going to delay it even more.
But that would, but candidly, the first proposal we got in came in at $99,999. And I don't make a habit of bringing something that's within a dollar of my signing authority, especially as it relates to this particular project and, and moving that forward.
So, Ernst &amp; Young came in at 99,999 originally?
Yes. We negotiated it down to 89,9 whatever it is.
999.
But once I made the decision to bring it to the commission for their consideration, I didn't change that based upon negotiating it down $10,000. I still think that in the spirit of transparency, as we've disclosed that we'd be with this project, it was appropriate to bring it. If you want me to have that discussion with Colliers?
It's just going to delay it another two weeks.
It would, because the next time you could approve anything to move forward would be, would be the 15th.
Can we vote to move it forward tonight, based on an amount not to exceed this dollar amount, but not this company?
I don't know if we could change, that, that practically changes. I, I think what you could do is you could, okay, I'm going to do this on the fly. I think what you could do, if you wanted to go that direction, is you could say, "We're not going to go the direction that's on the agenda, but city manager negotiate with Colliers, work to a scope of work that's within your signing authority, and move it forward," and then just report back to us what you did, and...
But we would like it to be done quicker.
That you want it to be faster.
Like, within a month.
But what is Colliers' expertise in this?
That's what I'm going to need to learn beyond the real estate aspect.
They only, they're just realtors.
Yeah, and I just have some questions on this. So, I think we like the scope of work here. Is that right, the statement of work?
Yes.
Okay. So, under this idea of Colliers and the city auditor, who would do the reading of the existing ground lease with city's tenant to understand the current contractual payments and implied net present value of the payments over the course of the remaining lease term? Who would do that?
I'm not prepared to go through the scope and tell you what Colliers is capable of and what they're not. So, I, I don't, I really can't answer that. I'd like to, but I really can't.
Yeah. Yeah, so I don't think Colliers can do that.
I agree.
Right? So that's so city auditor.
And they'd be the first to admit that.
That's that's one of mine.
That's one of your, so you're very comfortable doing that?
I can do that one, yes, sir.
Okay, great. Then if we go to, let's see, read and summarize other third-party market reports the city's tenants has obtained supporting their redevelopment plans. Would that be you, city auditor?
Read and summarize, yes. Evaluate, no.
Okay. Okay, so evaluation would be a little bit challenging there. Implied market land lease payment range based on city tenant's proposal, internal investments, development model with market rates best on construction cost estimate, net operating income, appropriate market return, market investment. Who would be doing that?
Yeah, that's not me.
Okay. Well, the whole discussions with bank lenders and other market participants to understand what's financeable, not financeable from a ground lease perspective for similar mixed-use sites.
Also not me.
Okay. And I don't know if Colliers has that expertise. I don't I don't think they do. I just think we'd have some gaps. Maybe, Chris, there's other CPA firms that we want to consider that, you know, may come in lower. You know, if Commissioner Glassman, if you're not.
I don't know, Commissioner, if you read the statement of work, the scope, so much of this is real estate, actually.
Well, except for the big components I just read.
Yeah, well, but a lot of that.
But no, he said he can't do it.
But he could do what he can do.
The big chunks I just read, he said he can't do.
But I don't understand why Colliers can't do so much of this, whether this is the land valuation section, whether it's the commercial market assessment, so much of this seems like in their wheelhouse. Am I wrong? I don't know.
I think it's within their wheelhouse. I think it's outside the scope of our contract is what the city attorney was.
Oh, I understand. So that gets amended for that.
But it's okay if it's outside of the scope of the contract we currently have with them. We would just like to use them because they already have knowledge of this property and they're already doing.
You can't use them outside the scope of their contract. We have to amend the contract.
I understand we can we can, Chris can negotiate a new contract with them.
But I think this goes back, though, to what Commissioner Glassman was alluding to earlier. So the reason we went with Ernst &amp; Young was because we have a master agreement with them, which provides for certain types of services. Even with that master agreement in place, it has still taken us, it took us a month to get from having the master agreement to the scope of work, to bringing a an agreement forward that went through their attorney's office, our attorney's office, to get to this point. So this has taken a month to get from we want to use them to where we are. We're going to have the same process if we're dealing with Colliers. So if we have an agreement that doesn't cover what we want them to do, we have to go back, negotiate that, bring that back to you. We have that same, it's going to it's going to add another month to the process.
Yeah, I agree, but here's where I'm struggling. It's not a kick at you. It's just that when we, not me, some of us said they wanted to go down this road. You said we had this master agreement and it would expedite this thing.
It did.
And what I think we are struggling with, at least some of us, or maybe I think two, based on what I hear, is the expedience or lack thereof of getting what we need to move this lease forward or or say no to it. I mean, we just want to have an opportunity to go up and down. But we keep throwing these things into the mix that keeps pushing or moving the goalposts of something that's not really this this complicated. It may be political, but not complicated. Because I think you've seen deals time and time again, all of us have. And we just want to find, I think this is what the commissioner is saying, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Glassman, we can get there a different way because you're looking at things that are sitting right there that are telling us the answers. We just want someone to say yes or no, this is accurate. It's still an assumption.
I think we're trying to.
To me, an assumption doesn't mean it's it's correct. Am I correct?
Trying to look for the best deal for the community, for the city. Isn't that what we're trying to look? And we're asking an outside consultant to tell us what is the best deal for the community on the valuations of the property and the expectations of the business that's going to be operated on the site. Why we that why that's why that's being challenged, I don't understand.
I'm not challenging it. I'm just saying, when I heard the commissioner bring this up, it's not, I really don't force a lot on this because it's his district. But when he brings this up, these are things that I have looked at or collected along the way as well. And I'm trying to get the same outcome as you, Mayor, or anybody else up here. But it seems like we just keep getting in our own way with 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 tools that we already have access to. And if that report is, is that report independent other than the client paying for? Is that an independent?
Yeah, I mean, all the people that did it, their names here, their resumes are here. Yeah, I mean, it's by the Washington, the Washington Economics Group and Business Flare. Two companies with several principals put this together. We all got it December 6, 2021, and stated. And, you know, just to your point also, Commissioner McKenzie, I think from from my own purposes, I felt that seven weeks ago, we were led to believe, like you just said, hey, we've got Ernst &amp; Young under contract for general services. All we need to do is, you know, add something new to their scope and boom.
Right.
But it's not happening that easily.
It looks like it's going to be another seven or eight.
That's the point. That's the point.
I don't have the control there, but.
Right. I felt seven weeks ago led to believe that, hey, we got them under contract, this is really going to be an easy thing, and now it's really not going to be an easy thing.
You know, I'm sort of interesting because I'm sitting here listening to all this. And, you know, and I've sat here, you know, year after year after year, listening to comments that you've made when developers have come to us and they provided us a traffic analysis. And and how many times you've challenged the developer's analysis in saying, you know, we need to get an independent analysis because we can't always rely on what the developer gives to us in terms of determining what the.
And I'm still saying the same thing, although you're not listening to me saying that same exact thing.
What am I not hearing?
What you're not hearing, and I guess this is the fourth or fifth time I'm saying it, I agree with you. I agree with you that this needs to be vetted for the economic model, the assumptions and the math. I just don't see having to go with Ernst &amp; Young as the solution because I think we have the tools.
He just, Mr. Herb says he doesn't have the qualifications to do the things that are.
No, not not all, not not all of them.
But the most important ones.
Well, I just, well, then that.
He admitted he doesn't, you know, he has a certain expertise, but there's a limit.
I understand, but we have relied on his limited expertise, as you want to put it, for many other projects in the past, and we will in the future. And he has been part of these discussions for doing this exact same work in the past with Bahia Mar. And I really do believe that what he can do and what Colliers can do, I mean, I don't, I'm not going to keep repeating myself, but I I don't disagree with you in terms of how important it is to make sure that we're not just relying on this document. But I I know I know the rabbit hole that we are going to go through now. Trust me, because I've gone through the rabbit hole with One Stop Shop and Ernst &amp; Young, and you will not be coming back here in six weeks with a final final on this. I promise you.
Okay, so city attorney, city auditor, sorry, so just share with me again, Ernst &amp; Young said how long to work on this?
So Ernst &amp; Young had originally said that they would do this in six weeks. So let me, from a chronology perspective, because I that seems to be an issue of concern. So when we talked, you're absolutely right, Commissioner, I indicated that I was thinking that we would be able to have this done in coordination with the appraisal. Several things have happened during that period of time. Okay? We looked at the master agreement to make sure that it would encompass the scope of work that we were talking about. E&amp;Y had to develop a scope of work, bring it back. It had to be reviewed by the attorney's office. And then the holidays hit. To be perfectly candid, they closed down for the week from Christmas through New Year's. That's very common in big four consulting firms. Their, all their staff is off on vacation at that point because they kick into high gear with audit season starting January 1. That's when that's when audit season kicks into high gear. So out of the four weeks of December, we lost one week to the holidays. So we had basically a three-week period in there. And to your point, they were also the same team as the ones who are actively engaged in working on the One Stop. So they were hard at work doing that. At the period of time, they were also developing the scope of work for the Bahia Mar project. When we got back, we had some back and forth with them. We got a proposal from them. We brought the proposal to the city manager's office, and that was mid-January. He looked at it, had some concerns about the pricing, and he said this needs to come to the commission for their approval. So that's how we went to where we are today because it was a very legitimate concern that that the manager brought up, and he wanted to make sure in the interest of full transparency that we brought this and got your concurrence before we moved forward with it. And in conversations, and I agree completely with his perspective, that transparency and buy-in from the commission was more important than speed. So the additional two weeks that we took from mid-January to now were in the interest of having this conversation. Okay, and I will also say this, I feel obligated to defend Ernst &amp; Young on this one, too. Not that I have any connection with the firm whatsoever. I was actually Price Waterhouse. But all the money that we have paid to Ernst &amp; Young was not from the city. All the work that they've done for us on all of the other projects associated with the with the water.
Paid by the applicants.
We're paid by the applicants.
I understand.
So the city is not out. We, they have not come to us making money off of us. We have gone to them, asking them to take on additional work for us in order for us to meet our statutory obligations to appropriately review all the unsolicited proposals. So it's.
John, are you are you are you qualified, are you able to actually look at this document and tell me whether the modeling used in the study is is accurate and?
So I'm going to do the same thing that Ernst &amp; Young does. I'm going to go there to them. I'm going to say, show me how you came up with all these numbers. And what you're saying E&amp;Y did with respect to the One Stop is the same thing I'm going to do with them. It'll probably take me six weeks to two months to get it done.
And are you able to also tell us whether the math is accurate?
I can tell you whether the math is accurate. I can't tell you whether the assumptions are valid.
I understand. But if the assumptions are handled by Colliers, are you able to handle the math in terms of the accuracy and also the economic modeling as opposed as proposed in this?
Without looking through that line by line, I can't give you a yes or no answer. I can tell you more likely than not, yes.
I would imagine that you would be. Yes, so that's my point.
But Commissioner, that's only part of the scope.
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
But there's more to the analysis.
The rest of the, yeah, there's more to the analysis.
Okay, well, I again, I looked at the scope, and I I just feel confident that we would be able to handle it.
Let me dig on on timeline, Commissioner, just for, see if we can get. So, John, if this moves forward tonight, then give me the timeline that E&amp;Y is telling you, when we could have an analysis.
Again, I believe the contract calls for six weeks, and I I don't see any reason why, if we have a cooperative applicant, which we do in this case, I know the Tates are chomping at the bit to get this done. So I have no doubt in my mind that they will be as forthcoming as they possibly can to provide all the requested information in a very timely manner. They have been that way with me throughout this whole process. So I I see no problem with that. They can probably turn it around faster, but I don't want to speak on their behalf. So I think that's a reasonable length of time. But just like with One Stop, so One Stop is done, right? So we're going to have a meeting with them this week to go over their draft report. But you need to understand, when we do this, it's the same thing when I do my reports. My reports, before they ever come to this commission, are probably done six weeks before you ever see them. So my fieldwork is probably done two months before you ever see a report. My fieldwork is done, we write a report, it goes through 12, 15 versions before we then submit it over to the city manager as a draft report. Then we have an exit conference. That takes another couple of weeks. And then we take the responses back, which take them another two or three weeks to provide to me, so I have man responses. And then it goes on to a commission agenda, which takes another two weeks. That is an eight-week process from the day my auditors are done in the field and start writing their report. This does not happen fast.
So here's my, agreed, but here's my suggestion is that if this is approved, for you to go and to E&amp;Y and say, time is of the essence. The commission is not happy with the potential of six weeks. We need this in four weeks from today on March 1, the first commission meeting in March after our next commission. So it's one commission meeting after our next one. And please, with all due haste, please make this possible and see what they get back to you. I think.
So so let's assume you approve this tonight. It's Tuesday. It will probably take, and I'm going to look over at Alan to get executed, documents back and forth. I don't know if it has to be reviewed by your office again. I mean, certainly, we can communicate with with E&amp;Y tomorrow, but I don't know how long that exchange of paperwork takes. So that's outside my.
Yep, that's fair. That's fair. Alan?
And I can tell you that their attorneys will never let them commit to four weeks.
Right, I got I got they don't, they won't commit.
They won't commit. Because even with the six weeks, there's always language in in these agreements that, you know, have contingencies contingencies in place, but I don't see them agreeing to four weeks.
Absolutely, so.
Especially with the depth of analysis that that they have to do for this particular scope of work.
Great. So there's a difference between John conveying urgency and asking for expedited work and a binding contractual obligation. And I'm asking for just a.
Absolutely, but.
A emphasis of urgency.
But we can ask that, but the next time that we can come to you and tell you what they said, though, is two weeks.
Yeah, I think.
Here's, no, but hold on. It actually can be sooner than that. Because here's here's how we can expedite communication, is city auditor could send an email, correct me if I'm wrong legally, the city auditor could send us an email as soon as, you know, three or four days from now to to say, hey, city commissioners, here's what E&amp;Y has said. Here's what I emphasized to them, and here's where we might be heading. So we can have some regular back and forth.
You can't. That violates sunshine.
Back and forth you can have. Hold on, hold on.
If he sends you an email and you respond to it with regards to, yes, that's good, no, that's violating sunshine. I'm pulling, I can't pull you guys. We can't pull you.
City auditor can't give us an update on a.
He'll give you an update, but you can't respond. So if he says, absolutely, they're good with it, the next side, they can't execute on that because I don't know if I send an email to the five of you that, yes, they are willing to do this. I can't get a response from you.
That's fine.
We would have to vote on it.
And what's the point of me sending you the communication?
The answers, no.
Because I still, what if the answer, I don't know what the answer is.
The point is an update. The city auditor cannot provide us an update on progress.
Right, but that's fine.
Exactly, that's fine. That's all I want.
But if he comes back and says, no, they think it's really going to be eight weeks, that's it. It's eight weeks.
Absolutely. That's all we're looking for, is just a status update. That's it.
I misunderstood you.
Commissioner, would you like to make a motion?
I just want a clarification real quick. So, John, you're also saying if we didn't go forward tonight with this plan, that it would also take you in partnership with Colliers at least six weeks also? So your timeline is about the same as.
I can't imagine that I could do it any faster than they can. I have, so, and I don't want this to come out the wrong way, but I have a lot of other things on my plate as it is, so I can't drop everything else that I'm doing to run an office and just do this. So just to focus on one project exclusively and not manage my office for the next six weeks is is not practical. I can't do that. I have an office to run. At the same time, the the difference is for me to be hands-on keyboard means I can't be doing anything else, and my office doesn't run itself. So I still have to administer.
That's good to know. And also, didn't you just say, and correct me if I'm wrong, that one of your concerns about Ernst &amp; Young being expedient is they're in the middle of an audit tax season? Did you say that?
So, no, what I was saying is that there, the office, the offices for these firms typically close that week between because they're about to embark on audit season. The team we're using is not an audit team. So you have an audit practice, a tax practice, a consulting practice. So we use the consulting practice. Their time and their commitments are not impacted by traditional audit season in public accounting.
And those folks are here with boots on the ground, right?
So they're spread out. They're using resources from multiple offices, which is part of why you use a firm with national and international reach, is they want to be able to tap that expertise that they have within their, for example, to to your point, Commissioner, they've got a real estate practice. Ernst &amp; Young, like all the big four accounting firms, are deep into various industries, real estate simply being one of them. So they have deep expertise and understanding of construction, construction costs, hotel industry, you know, all of these things are areas of practice for them. I know my, one of my previous firms, Panella Kerr Forster, is an outstanding expert in the field of hospitality and and is one of the acknowledged experts in that. So all these firms have deep expertise in various industries and use utilizing these firms as a way to tap into that knowledge base that they have. Again, things that I don't have. My my industry knowledge is specific. So I know nothing about the construction industry. I know nothing about the hotel industry. I can't tell you when they talk about their room rates and their vacancy rates and things of that nature or expenses associated with the operation of a hotel, whether that's realistic or not. So I can't validate the assumptions. So I have to look at those and either have to have them validated for me by somebody with expert industry knowledge to say yea or nay. Give me that and then yes, I can do the rest of the financial analysis, but I can't tell you whether the underlying assumptions are reasonable, rational, achievable, or anything else.
Right, and I wouldn't expect you to.
Right, but that's why we look at somebody that has this broad expertise because they bring those resources to the table. You know, when I was with PWC, I forgot, they got 10,000 employees in one office alone. So I don't have that, you know.
I understand. That's why I suggested Colliers. No, I understand that.
I have one more question.
Okay, so this.
I have one more question.
Yeah, last one.
So what does the applicant do with that analysis they paid for? Um, at the end of the day, what, why is he, why is he paying someone to produce that? What is he going to do with that at the end of the day?
The, the value of that analysis for him is to demonstrate to the city why it is important to move forward with this project at this time. Because there have been various other proposals for the project, including doing nothing, waiting 42 years for the lease to run out and, and taking the property, the, taking the property back. So this is a way of saying, "We have a massive economic impact moving forward with this project as it's being presented." And the difference between this project as rental apartments for the next 42 years of the existing lease versus this project of doing nothing versus this project of doing these condos that are going to have probably a one and a half billion dollar value by the time they're all built out over the next 10 years is substantial. So we do the same thing when we're looking at the boat show, for example. We have an economic analysis of the value of the boat show to the greater Fort Lauderdale area. And that's how we're able to say, "This is like having the equivalent of a Super Bowl every year." So that is essentially what you have. You have a report which is talking about the overall economic value to the city, and that includes salaries, payrolls to, to residents. It includes the, the revenue that the businesses locally are going to generate off of this. It includes sales taxes, property taxes, bed taxes. That's the total economic impact to, to the, the larger Fort Lauderdale and Broward County. And that's part of what that economic impact statement is going to tell you. It is to demonstrate the overall value of the project.
John, John, thank you. I appreciate that you gave us that update and I appreciate that you clarified it was six weeks whether you and Colliers do it or Ernst &amp; Young. I also, I, I need to know, because we would all, I think, like to move this forward. What are, what do we have to do from today till we vote? I know we have an appraisal, we have leases that we're still reviewing, three different types of leases. So is it fair to say that if we say it's going to be six weeks by March 15th, we can get back the, so that we can make a decision and vote? The appraisal, do we vote on one lease or all three leases?
My recommendation is that you're going to vote on all because they're inextricably intertwined. The master declaration obviously is going to be a living document that's going to be dictated about what happens there in the future, but the principal aspects are going to have to be there. I, I am going to recommend though, because I am meeting with you individually, collectively, you all are going to have to discuss and give us guidance as to what changes need to occur.
Right.
Cause I can glean from you all in my individual conversations, what changes you agree or what recommendations you agree with, but I can't use that until you collectively decide in public.
Okay.
So that's going to take another meeting.
All right. So maybe in a month, we have a public conversation about the three leases and we get our collective input into the changes that need to be made? Or I don't know, maybe in two weeks we have those conversations? That's probably too soon?
Yeah, because I'm working with your assistants to schedule, I have two more commissioners on the master lease and then we have subsequent meetings we have to have at least an hour each with the master declaration and the phased leases. So there's another round.
Okay, so if we meet in four weeks to discuss the, the releases, you can make those edits and bring them back to us so that we, on March 15th, we can vote on the three leases. It with, we will have the appraisal and we will have the Ernst &amp; Young report.
The only contingency there is whatever changes I decide to make based on your guidance is going to have to go back to the EMR and it's going to have to have the feedback. We go back and forth. There may have to be some back and forth and I don't know how long that's going to take. There may be things, I gather, they're not going to agree with that we're going to suggest. Uh, and that's going to have to be negotiated, whether it happens at that meeting or otherwise, but that may elongate the timeline.
Okay, but if we all at least commit ourselves to be available to meet with you and give you the input, I'm sure, um, the EMR will as well. So we can say, once again, in, in four weeks, we will publicly discuss the three leases. We will have the appraisal by then. And then in six weeks, we will vote on the three leases with the input from Ernst &amp; Young with the edits and modifications that we make based on the input you get in four weeks. Is that?
Well, that's a very, that's possible, you know, assuming that we've had time to digest.
Well, we're going to have to start digesting.
If we get it the day of the meeting, I'm, I can't, I'm.
Well, maybe we can ask for it to come in two days in advance or something. I, I'm, I'm sure they can accommodate. So it sounds like there are some other kind of key pieces at play that we really need all of them to come together to, uh, to so that we can vote. And, um, so I think we need to keep doing what we're doing, having these individual meetings, then you'll meet with the Tates and.
It could happen. I, I, that's, you know, everything you just said, it's very possible and let's work on, let's work on that. We got a lot of work to look at. These leases are very lengthy and, you know, so let's take the time to, to review them. I know you've taken time with me and have sort of guided me through the highlights and I appreciate that. So, uh, and I know you've done it with the other commissioners. So this is really great. So, all right, let's have a motion.
So it, is, is, does that make sense to you, Commissioner Glassman? Even if we move this forward, it sounds like it's going to take six weeks either way, whether.
No, I understand. I think, I think your timetable is good and hopefully, uh.
Yeah, let, let's try to stick to it. Let's do what we can. We need.
I'm taking bets, but I think it sounds good.
Well, you know.
Okay, let's move forward. Let's, Commissioner.
I won my other bet today.
Uh huh.
Why not the district commissioner?
Cause district.
Go ahead.
Someone, someone make a motion. Let's move the meeting along.
But, no, hold on a second, hold on. Don't do that, don't do that, please. We've spent plenty of time over here, Ma, way beyond what we, don't rush this. And I'm just curious as to what the district commission wants to do, because I could easily put a proposal, a, a, a motion on the floor too.
Okay, someone make a motion.
Would you like, you know, cherry picking here?
No, I'm, I'll defer to someone that wants to make a positive motion because my motion won't be positive, so that's okay.
Okay, will someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. CP2, motion approving purchase of financial analysis services for Bahia Mar lease proposal. It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
I have a problem with his dollar amounts. I, I, I just can't in good faith, you know, spend this kind of money.
All right.
The public's money.
Yes or no?
Doing this. My answer is no.
Okay.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Hold on, what does no mean? No means this dies and then.
Correct.
Chris, we just give you the authority to.
You would have to grant me if you want a different direction, you'd have to grant me that and I'd have to look at our, how we could purchase it. I'd have to confer with the city attorney and bring something back to you or come back and tell you what I did on your behalf that I decided to do.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm really not a gambler, so I feel uncomfortable doing this, but I will probably vote no also, but with the understanding that you're going to figure this out and stick to the timeline that we just have agreed to.
Yeah, but, but Vice Mayor is just going to delay it another.
It's not going to delay it because Chris can make this decision without us. He's just bringing it to us so we can spend two hours having fun.
Only if it's within his authority.
It's under a hundred thousand, right?
Right, and if it's the type, right, so we have to make sure he has the authority to do. If he does, he can do it and come back and report, but if he doesn't, we'd have to come back to you.
So I, when I'm saying I'm voting no to not approve this, you know, if this ends up turning your best bet to move things forward fast, you know, I'm, I'm okay with that too. But just please.
I guess.
I, I, I'm voting no because I'm going to give you the, I'm hoping you're going to take the ball and run with it and just make things happen as fast as possible, whether you're exploring in-house or, or, or this. But I would be really upset, which is why I don't like gambling, if I vote no and this gets delayed, so.
Let's let the mayor vote and then I'll get a question I'd like to ask.
So I think I voted no.
Okay. So has everyone voted?
No.
Commissioner Glassman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
And Mayor Trentalis?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so where, so this is the posture we're in, okay? We have defeated this motion, okay? And we're not going to have a financial analysis done by this company. So, uh, yet we're giving the authority to Chris to go have a financial analysis done by an unnamed company for an unnamed amount, so long as it's under a hundred thousand dollars.
What I was going to ask Mayor is that seeing the way that this vote was going, uh, as it was going, um, I would ask you all just to, this is obviously going to be something because of a timeline that you've articulated, something I've got to jump on as soon as tonight. Um, having said that, I, I may need you all to come back and assemble before your next meeting. And so, um, you know, I don't know what your next week looks like, but to the extent I need to ask that of you, I would just ask that you keep an open enough schedule that if I needed a special meeting for this one topic so that it could stay on the timeline that you articulated tonight.
Well, what would be your, what would be your, which, what did, what do you think this commission just asked you to do?
Um, I think I've.
That you wanted to come back.
Yeah, so I think I've got to figure out, number one, if we have a continuing contract or other existing contract, that this, this type of scope of work is already in a pre-negotiated contract. Number two, I need to officially know what the procurement rules are and whether or not I can treat it as a proprietary purchase or whether or not I have to do some type of competitive solicitation. I'm going to answer those two questions. If either the question, if the answer to the first question is no, and the answer to the second question is yes, then I have no way of doing it on my own and would need to come back in front of you. If the answer to the first question is yes, and the answer to the second question is, I forget what even the question was, but if I can actually do it.
You have to put out for competitive bidding, which will take several months.
If it's vice versa.
Right.
Um, then I will, um, I, I hear as though you have trusted me to make a decision and I'll come back and tell you what I've done.
Okay. I personally could not make a decision on this, on this project unless there is an independent financial services analysis.
Understood.
See how anybody on this commission could possibly make a decision.
Don't, don't, don't speak for me.
I'm not speaking for you.
You just say, you don't say anybody else, just speak for you.
I am speaking.
This is a consensus. Don't, I mean, please Dean, don't, don't do that.
Speaking for me and I think I should have, I deserve to have.
I don't see how you can do that.
When I'm speaking. So stop interrupting me.
I'm not going to interrupt you.
Stop.
It's over. Let's move on with this subject matter.
Hey, you keep going.
You can't continue to talk about it unless it's a consensus.
You just love to run off them at the mouth.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Really? Look at you.
So anyway.
Speaking to the camera. Please let the people know that you have defeated this. Please tell them that you're not going to do this. Don't play with me, I won't play with you.
Whatever.
You want to start?
So the reality is.
Reality is, you don't want to do it.
Will you just stop talking?
I, I can talk.
Okay, you talk and then I'll, I'll wait till you finish.
Well, I'll talk now. So Chris, if you could just tell him.
Excuse me.
Oh, I thought you two were. But you both were stopped talking.
I yield to the commissioner, uh.
You don't have, this is not.
Oh, I don't have any authority?
No, you don't.
What are you?
You do.
Strong mayor?
On the person, on the mayor who has the authority.
Strong mayor or one vote?
Run the meetings.
Can we go over the charter right quick and find out if this is strong?
If you cannot abide by those rules, you have to.
Does he have more authority than me in terms of voting?
The point is that, that we have now, uh, decided we do not want this financial analysis done.
That's not true.
Okay, so what is it?
That's not true. We do want, we want the analysis that you want done.
That's the whole point. How is it going to be accomplished?
Well, Chris, if you could also, if you are renegotiating with Ernst &amp; Young or whoever you're talking to, Colliers, show them this document.
That's what we're saying.
Tell them it costs $38,000, not 90,000, not 99,999. Do your best and stick.
But the scope of work on that was so different than the scope of work that was.
But we're agreeing with you.
That's, no, that's okay. This is a really good basis to start from. It really is a good basis.
Because the tenant said it was a good basis?
Have you read this document in total title?
Of course I have.
Okay, so then you should know, it's very comprehensive.
Yeah, it makes it look like it, it's a glowing analysis of exactly what they want, what they want to do.
No, but the, again, the assumptions have to be borne out. That's why we're going to ask someone to make sure these assumptions are correct and that's why we're going to ask our auditor to make sure the math is correct and to make sure that the economic modeling is correct. All those things need to be done. I agree with you. But again, Chris.
And I agree with him.
Thirty-eight thousand dollars, 38,000, not 99,999.
We're agreeing with you.
We'll be here in May.
We're all.
We're agreeing with you.
No, we're not, because I like the Vice Mayor's timeline and I think we need to stick to it because I don't want to see this dragging on for another three, four, five, six months.
There you have it.
You just guaranteed that.
No, I didn't.
We didn't.
No, I didn't. No, we would have guaranteed it if we approved that motion and let Ernst.
That is correct.
Then you could have been guaranteed three, four, five, six months, trust me.
We'll see.
Yeah, okay.
And that's all we're saying.
Moving on to M1.
Hold on, Mayor, Mayor.
There you go, just talk right over us again.
Motion approving a service agreement.
Mayor, can I just jump in?
Fort Lauderdale and the city, uh, and the, and the community redevelopment agency. Uh, anyone have any questions regarding to M1? There being known, would someone like to move the item?
No moves.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mr. Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. Our one appointment of board and committee members. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the names?
All right, for the February 15th, uh, 2022 resolution consensus nomination infrastructure task force advisory committee, Jerry Angeli nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, uh, and Walk of Fame induction committee, Gail Butler nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And if possible, if we can, uh, adopt the resolution as amended tonight to add that name to it so that we can.
Add who to the?
Uh, Gail Butler, so that she can attend the Walk of, upcoming Walk of Fame meeting. All right, so for tonight's, uh, resolution, we have the cemetery system board of trustees, Dr. Pamela Beasley Pittman, uh, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Charter revision board, Judith Stern.
Which board was that? Which board was that?
Cemetery.
I thought we already did that a couple of weeks ago.
I, I read it that it was going to be on this, on, on this resolution.
I thought we had, I thought you had already nominated her, okay.
Uh, Judith Stern on the charter revision board nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Community appearance board, Stephanie Tonsfeld nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Michael Yanilos nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Miguel Wright nominated by Mayor Trentalis. For the infrastructure task force advisory committee, James Labrie nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Shane Grabzky nominated by Vice Mayor Moritas. Jacqueline Scott, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Roosevelt Walters, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Ralph Seltman, nominated by Vice Mayor Moritas. Peter Partington, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Charlie Ladd, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. For the Insurance Advisory Board, Joseph J. Pichara Senior, Commissioner, uh, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Mark Schwartz, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Steve Botkin, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Jonathan Perillo, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Ted Hess Senior, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Nuisance Abatement Board, Avik Dora Pemper, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Joel Slotnick, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. The Parks, Recreation and Beaches Board, Charlie Leecoft, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Sustainability Advisory Board, David Blatner, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Walk of Fame Induction Committee, Gina Ellis, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, and George Hambury, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. And that rounds out for the...
Anyone have any questions or comments or amendments? Someone like to introduce the...
Introduce.
...introduce the resolution as amended?
As amended, introduce.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit, exhibit attached thereto and made a part hereof. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and thank you to all those members who have agreed to participate on those committees and boards. Thank you for your commitment to the city and the sacrifice that you make in doing your work. Thank you. Our two, resolution considering a merit salary increase for the...
We should move this to February 15th.
Annual...
March 15th.
Review.
I said, let's move this to February 15th.
Chris, I would like an analysis, I'd like an analysis.
It's known as Combat Day.
I'd like to request an analysis by Ernst &amp; Young on this, uh, agenda item.
And when we get it back, maybe we'll give you...
And then in six weeks, we can talk about it. Thank you.
So, Mayor, Commissioner, this is in front of you because you asked for it at the last meeting. I am perfectly fine if you wanted to defer this for a meeting.
No, we can do it right now.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion there.
Please, the resolution, introduce the resolution, and how would you fill in the blank?
Uh, for a 5% merit salary increase. Introduced.
So, what is your base salary now?
275, I think is what we said the last time.
Okay.
I could tell you specifically, but that's, that's about where it is.
So, so there's, there's, uh, salary increase and there's also, um, cost of living?
I believe there's just one. I believe it just just contemplates a merit...
Are you eligible for, I think there's no, you're normally eligible. All employees are normally eligible for both.
I believe that.
Not the commission. The commission's not eligible for cost of living.
Quiet!
Are you, are you sure? Doesn't...
I believe that's correct.
Their health coverage is fantastic, so it makes up for that.
Does venting a lot, I'm sorry.
It's a cake, Mayor.
My apologies. It is all that sugar. Thanks for the cake, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, no more cake.
That was actually Erica. I should not take the credit. Thank you, Erica, for buying the cake. That was her gift.
It was the rose you gave him on his piece.
The rose, it's all over, all over my shirt.
Okay, so...
I believe that's correct, Mayor. I believe you're right. If we do issue a, if we do a cost of living adjustment across the board, it is applied across the board, except for the commission, as Commissioner Glassman pointed out, because yours is calculated by formula.
Okay, so, if we...
Great formula.
...base salary of 5% increase, and then you're also eligible for cost of living?
I believe that's correct, so...
They would receive them in October, so they would...
Say it again?
Yes.
We've already received the COLA for this year.
Yeah, okay. So, resolution's been introduced, right, 5% plus the cost of living?
Mayor, how does that compare to the other city managers in the county? Well, Chris, maybe you know?
Um, there's, you know, we are, we're now in about the 75th percentile with, uh, other managers in the area. There are some that are just extraordinarily out there, and I'm not quite sure how, uh, those contracts got negotiated, but, uh, um...
Some are higher, some are lower.
Correct, I mean, because we are the largest city, so I'm just wondering if...
Yeah, then we, you know, some... We made a big adjustment to them when we first did it, too.
You, you, you did, and I would be much...
I think that's what he's trying to tell us, but...
Correct. I'm trying to be modest in how I say that.
Trying to be modest that if we wanted to, we could just go, you know, middle of the road and make a cap. That's what he's saying. However, we, we sit up here and we, we dream up what we wanna do, but what have we done for the others in, in their merits? I think it's just been whatever that percentage was. I think that's what you're saying.
That's, that's what I'm saying, is that what we've done historically has been a 3% merit and then accompanying cost of living, so, um, I...
Well, there's a motion, there's a resolution been introduced at 5%. Is that correct, Commissioner Sorenson?
But...
Correct. Okay.
But I think if we, not, not taking away from what he's saying, but if we do the 3%, and then we do, deal with the cost of living, it, it takes care of all that, right?
Cost of living has already been adjusted citywide.
And 3%?
And 3% is typically what we do as a merit increase.
And we're doing a merit thing, right?
That's what's under, that's what's being considered right now.
So, we're going 2% more than is normal.
Do any other city employees get, um, a merit increase above 3%?
There are some that are negotiated in contracts where it's, again, formula-based. So, if I take us to the Police and Fire Department, where we talk about the 75th percentile, et cetera, those adjustments are across the board. But those are all bargain salaries, um, and, uh, clearly, the manager's position is not protected by that type of a bargaining contract.
Okay, would you like to call the roll?
Did we get a second?
I'm sorry, there's no seconds. It's introduced, it's a resolution.
I thought you said, um, motion, I'm sorry.
A re, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing for a 5% uh, per merit salary increase for City Manager Christopher J. Lagerblum, effective January 1st, 2022. Commissioner McKenzie?
So, it's just 5%? We're not going to search for another...
It's 5% plus he's entitled to a cost of living increase.
That's not what I just understood it to be.
The cost of living that we received this year was 1.5%.
But it's, it'll be in this 5%, am I correct?
No, that's, that, that's in addition to.
So, if we, if we did 3%, it's already included in that, right?
No, the, the man that has, he, we all received 1.5% cost of living already. That's already built in.
In addition, that is automatic, automatically factored in.
Right, so when you, right, so you gave me, for example, you gave me 3% on the annual, and then I received, as every other employee, 1.5% COLA, as being an...
So, you've already received that?
I have received the 1.5, yes.
We're not adding to, was, like, my question was, we're not adding to this 5%?
You are not.
It happens automatically like everybody else.
That is correct.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the resolution's approved. Thank you, Chris, for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Um, PH1, this is a public hearing, quasi-judicial ordinance, approving a rezoning from Commerce Center District CC to urban, uh, Uptown Urban Village Northwest District, City of Fort Lauderdale 701 Cypress Creek Road and 6261 Northwest Sixth Way Citrix Systems and Cypress 6261 LLC. Question that I have is, Citrus, Citrix is just been bought. What is the purpose of this that we're doing? Are they gonna expand? Is that why they're doing the rezoning? Does someone wanna comment on this? Anthony?
Anthony, or...
As Anthony's coming to the podium, um, I did, yes, I read also yesterday about the acquisition, the $16.5 billion...
Mr. Shine is here.
Not sure what that means to this public hearing, but we'll start with Anthony and then see if Andrew's got anything more he wants to add.
Good evening, Anthony Fajardo, City of Fort Lauderdale. Yeah, the, the request is part of our incentive program in the Uptown Village, so, um, to incentivize people rezoning to one of our new uptown zoning districts. Staff processes the application for them, so we're doing that based on that request. There's an associated mixed-use project, I think it's, uh, 312 units and about 38,000 square feet of, uh, office and, uh, other commercial uses that are associated. It's going through a separate review process.
So, do we have any indication as to whether or not they're gonna actually go ahead with this?
I'd have to defer to the applicant on that.
Mr. Shine, do you have an answer for that, or you don't know yet?
Mayor, as he's walking up, uh, just a little housekeeping, it's not indicated on the agenda, but you need to make disclosures because it's quasi-judicial, so when you get to it, if you could do that, thank you.
I would add, Mayor, that, um, it is the preference of the city to rezone these parcels to something consistent with the uptown, because that was the overall intent.
Actually, I can't hear you because the commissioner's on his phone here.
Sorry, the, what I was saying was, it is, it is the preference of staff that these do be rezoned, because that was the overall tent, intent of the uptown area, so that we could foster redevelopment as it occurs along the corridors.
Okay. Mr. Shine, do you have any, any insight?
Good evening, Mayor, Andrew Shine, uh, with Lockery and Chalkers here on behalf of the property owner. Um, we're moving, we're moving full steam ahead with, uh, the, through the DRC process, so, no... You, you had asked if, if they plan on moving forward with it. There's no indication otherwise at this point.
Okay, alrighty, um, thank you, sir. Do you have, uh, can we, let's make disclosures, uh, Vice Mayor?
August 31st, 2021, Robert Lockery. On both of them.
Commissioner McKenzie, do you have any disclosures on this?
Uh, sorry, I don't know if your mic was on, try...
I met with Robert Lockery.
Commissioner, uh, Glassman?
Yes, September 23rd, met with Robert Lockery, counsel.
And Commissioner Sorenson?
Yep, applicant representative.
I have, uh, I also met with the applicant and their representatives. Okay, so, any questions regarding this? Uh, we don't have to close public hearing, do we?
You might as well.
All right, so, someone please move to...
So, move.
It's been seconded? Seconded.
Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, so, public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance? The ordinance has been introduced?
An ordinance amending Section 47-1.6.3 of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and Schedule A Revised Compilation attached thereto and by reference made a part thereof so as to rezone from Commerce Center District to Uptown Urban Village Northwest District, all of lots 4 and 5 Corporate Park Cypress Creek, according to the plat thereof as recorded in Plat Book 108, page 11 of the Public Records of Broward County, Florida, located west of Northwest Sixth Way, north of West Cypress Creek Road, east of Northwest Ninth Avenue, and south of Northwest 63rd Street. All said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, um, and the ordinance is approved.
Mayor, can I ask Anthony a question real quick?
Yes, sure.
Anthony, when we hit 2,000 units, do, does this incentive go away? Or can we add to it, or, I, I don't know why I'm thinking 2,000 in my mind, because I know we've had two projects approved so far.
I'm not sure I understand the question. You relate to flex units?
Yes, yes, I thought we were trying to incentivize to get 2,000 units in the uptown area, but...
So, the, the flex units are available citywide per the collapsed flex zone map.
Okay.
If you want units dedicated specifically to uptown, we'd have to do a land use...
Okay, so, right...
That's, that's something that's always on the table. We could always do that.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Okay, the last item on the agenda, this is a first reading of the ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations, regarding the downtown RAC review process and special regulations and the development permits and procedures providing for corrections. Seemed to me as like a cleanup ordinance.
That is correct.
Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.